Okay.
Calm, this board supervisor down.
Are we rowdy in here?
Yeah, we're rowdy. Got everybody, okay. All right, I think we're about ready to get started at seven o'clock. So, if we could, call the meeting to order. Let's begin with standing for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with the name of justice.
Whoa.
Nobody saw that. Good for drinking before you come down.
So much for the moment of silence. Thank you. We do have a quorum, all planning commission members are present. As usual, reminder that when you're saying something for the record, please be sure your microphone is on. We do need to adopt the agenda for tonight. Does anyone need to add anything or modify anything? If not, can I have a motion?
May I have to adopt the minutes as submitted?
Agenda.
Agenda is presented.
Motion to adopt the agenda has been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Okay, thank you. Take a break for public comments. Any public comment before we start tonight? Any general public comment? Okay. Opening new business, we need to adopt the minutes for April 2nd meeting, April 2nd, 2025.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think this.
April 16th is the date on this one, thank you, sir.
Yeah, April 16th.
I make a motion that we approve as submitted.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we have two cases and finally the comprehensive plan to look at. So let's start with case number RZ-03-25-1. Jonathan Bond, a rezoning application. Jonathan Bond has submitted an application to rezone a portion of his property from A1 Agricultural to B1 Business General. The applicant is seeking the partial rezoning of his property so that he may operate his artificial turf and hardscaping business out of an existing building. The property that is the subject of this application is located at 3351 Oak Park Road and is further identified as Madison County Tax Map 40-40. The property contains approximately 27 acres and is currently zoned A1. Anything to add? Mr. Nichols?
Not very much, Mr. Chairman. The plot that you all have, and there's a physical one in front of you, illustrates at the bottom the area that's to be rezoned. It's less than two acres, so it's smaller than the area that, you know, would be required to be subdivided out there. The, it's pretty straightforward, the applicant has a hardscaping service business. It's typical of what we see in the rest of the county. And I was talking to the applicant earlier this week, he's currently working with VDOT engineers in the early stages on moving or widening his entrance to accommodate his needs. But beyond that, there's nothing new than what we've previously discussed.
Thank you. And so he is still in the process of working with VDOT.
I would encourage you to ask the applicant.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Alan?
I don't have a question for Alan, but I would like to make the same comment that I made at the last meeting. Is that if we didn't approve this as a rezoning, I think that possibly we could just allow this to go through and let him use this as a home occupation. He has a building permit in possession right now and he is moving forward towards getting a residence. If he has his residence on the property, he would qualify for the home occupation. I suggest that maybe if we could allow him to go through with this and maybe under the consensus that if he allowed his residential permit to go void, then maybe he wouldn't be allowed to continue the operation unless he got it rezoned.
Okay, any further questions for Alan or further comments?
I got a comment.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. And I agree with what Mike's saying, that works sometimes, but my concern here would be he's got a problem with getting trucks in and out of there. And we will need VDOT to fix something there, or him to fix something that VDOT is satisfied with. So I think in this particular case, if the board sees fit to do so, or the planning commission sees fit to do so, it would probably be better to be rezoned. But again, like what you said, it's not a bad idea, but that would be my only concern.
And that's basically what brought this to our attention anyway, was the truck traffic in and out of there, I think. Any further comments or questions for Alan?
Yeah, again, Mr. Chairman, just the same line of, you know, thinking, I'm not particularly in favor of rezoning this small parcel in this area, but I think as far as how it's being used, it's probably pretty consistent with a lot of other things that are going on. I know a lot of other businesses operating through that area, it's not that much different than kind of the traffic you'd get from farming, you know, larger trucks, trailers, equipment coming in and out like that. Obviously, the entrance needs to be addressed in some way. I don't know, you know, how that's, if there's a regulation that would see to that if it was a home occupation, I'm guessing not. But, you know, I think I'd be in favor of something other than rezoning this small parcel in that location.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions for Alan? All right, if not, the applicant? If you would identify yourself and we'll go from there.
Jonathan Bond.
I don't know.
Can you hear me?
Not on, I don't think.
To address the issue with the entrance, we are working with VDOT right now. They just came out this afternoon to get line of sight and to see how wide we were. We do meet the standards for a low-volume entrance for commercial. Just contingent on if this gets passed, if I'm going to spend the money to get it engineered, because it's all got to be to spec through VDOT for them to move forward with the application to approve. The other issue we were having was the truck issue with big tractor-trailers. We've also avoided that situation with using smaller trucks. It's going to cost us a little bit more in the long run, but it's cheaper than moving the guardrails, widening the entrance, and redoing the whole thing. So that's the route that we are going to seek now, and if I need to provide paperwork for that, I can as well.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
What is he bringing in on these tractor-trailers?
Sand.
Sand?
Yes, sir. Pallets of sand, they come in 50-pound bags, and we use them inside the artificial turf to get all the fibers to stand up straight.
And so I'm just curious, how much of this artificial turf, are you doing any of this artificial turf in this county?
Yes, we do some work in Wolf Town and some Airbnbs around, but a lot of it is, you know, Northern Virginia, Richmond, Charlottesville area, Green, Rutgersville, we travel all over the place.
Who does artificial turf? Is it like little putt-putt things or what?
Yeah, it's mainly residential, yes. We build golf greens in people's backyards. It's a very niche business, for sure. There's not very many people going down 29 in the morning doing golf greens.
And about how many tractor-trailer loads do you get, say, in a week's time?
We get about five a year.
Five a year?
Yes, sir.
That's not very much, is it?
That's why I couldn't justify paying to get everything wide and then I'll just.
And you can only get that, you can't get that on a regular pallet truck, or you have to get it on a tractor trailer?
The quality of the sand that we buy, it comes out of Texas, so just to get a smaller truck to come across is a lot, but we're getting a bigger truck to come across, it's a lot cheaper to just get a whole truckload at one time. So we've kind of found a hub in North Carolina from one of our other dealers that has the space to do it, and we're just going to truck it from North Carolina up to Virginia on a smaller truck.
So you have figured out a way that you wouldn't have to use the tractor-trailers?
Correct, yep.
This is just curiosity, it's really not pertinent to this, but when you get to sand, what's, what kind of process are you using? You said you use it in the artificial turf to make the fiber stand up?
Yeah, no, we put it inside the turf, so once the turf is laid out in the yard and it's all stretched out, we put sand in it to help stand the fibers straight up, and it also has antimicrobials in it which help with mold and moss growth and dog urine and all sorts of stuff.
Interesting. Any other?
It's not something you can just buy at Home Depot. I wish I could, but.
Well, I did have a question regarding, who was the gentleman that you're dumping the sand at and restoring it, and then you're moving it in the smaller box trucks?
His name is Scott Fairman.
It's a neighboring parcel or nearby?
No, he's in North Carolina.
Oh, so it's coming from North Carol, that box truck is coming from there?
Yeah, he's got a plant down in North Carolina that's much bigger that he can accommodate three, four, or five truckloads at a time. So we're just buying in bulk, getting it there, and then it's kind of like going to be our main hub, and then we'll disperse from there in smaller trucks. Because I'm actually not the only one having this problem on the East Coast.
Okay. Well, then you answered my question, I was going to see if we needed to address if it was a neighboring parcel and there'd be truck traffic if they were involved with the permit, but yeah, we're not going to North Carolina.
Try to keep it in Madison.
Yeah.
So basically, you bring in as big a truckload as you can and not have a trailer, tractor-trailer?
Correct.
You dump it on your place and then you move it onto a truck somewhere?
From a trailer to a drop site.
Okay. So you're basically storing sand until you use it?
Yeah, that's basically all that building is for, is just storage. Store materials till we can get to the job to get and do it, so nothing gets wet.
When did you break ground on your residence?
When? Last month. We just did an amendment on the foundation and it's in Jamie Wilk's office as we speak, so I'm hoping to get that approved by tomorrow, because it's formed up and ready to go. So once he approves it, then I can get an inspection and start pouring concrete.
And when do you anticipate getting a certificate of residency?
I'm hoping by December is the goal.
Okay, any other questions for that? Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, as always, any public comment on this case? Any public comment? Do we have anybody online? Nobody? No one commenting, okay. Thank you. Okay. Seems like we've got several people think we should just be able to do this as a home occupation. So what's the, what's the pledge of your planning commission here?
I mean, I'm definitely curious to see what all y'all have to say, but I'm just inclined to vote to deny the rezoning and, I mean, he's got.
Well, the concern, like I said, I got nothing, is if you deny the rezoning, what course of action do we do, even though he's going to bring a smaller truck, it's still going to be a truck? And what course of action do we have if we do this? I got two concerns, really. What course of action do we have to make sure that we're going to get the proper turning lane in there if we do it as a home occupation? Is that going to change it with the state? And the second thing is, you're running a business out of there, and the county needs to collect taxes on business, and that's why I feel like it should be B1.
Absolutely. I'm all for that, I mean, I think our zoning orange in regards to home occupation needs to be looked over thoroughly. And I agree with you too on that point, but I mean, what's stopping the farmer next door from bringing in a tractor-trailer, you know?
He's not in here in front of us.
Cattle feed, yeah, sure, yeah.
So at this point, it sounds like the rezoning is maybe just a cleaner, simpler way to deal with this actual case. Any other?
I'll kind of further too, I mean, one, the applicant came and met with Mr. Nichols, and he is the voice of the county when it comes to these matters, you know, officially. And I think that he and the applicant had a pretty good conversation about it, and I would assume, I may be putting words in your mouth, that you agree with this from an application standpoint, this course of action? If he's gone through the process, then I fear we should give him at least a fair up and down. I agree with some of the comments, it may be the spot zoning and maybe a small precedent that could get slippery down the road, but I think from a liability standpoint, it probably makes the most sense.
Further comments?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that case number RZ-03-25-1 be recommended to the Board of Supervisors for approval.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to recommend case number RZ-03-25-1 for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous approval then. All right, so case number RZ-03-25-1 will be recommended to the Board of Supervisors for approval. Next case is case number 2024-ZOA-12-18-02, adoption of personal campground definition. The adoption of a definition for a personal campground is being proposed to allow for by right recreation on private property, but regulate the use of recreational vehicles or RVs and tents to prevent their use as permanent residences. Mr. Nichols, anything to add on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On the screen and in the agenda has been amended to show the language as it would appear in the zoning ordinance. We changed the formatting from the original letter to be as it should be presented. So if you take a moment to have a look over it, it's, the content is exactly as it was presented, but the formatting has changed.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Nichols? Anyone have any comments at this time?
So apparently this, this other part, the adoption as by right use, that's not going to be in the verbiage at all then?
It will appear in the, in the ordinance at Article 20-139A. Currently, it stops at 139, then 140, so this will be an A to keep things in there alphabetical. And it will be exactly as it appears, based on our conversation that previously, that the personal campground shall be a by right use in C1 and R1. And by consequence of it being a by right use in C1, it is also a by right use in A1. It will not appear on the list in there, but it will be a by right use. We've done this with other things like the event venue ordinance, which states that, while it's not a listed use, you know, when you look at the by right uses on those pages, when you look up the definition in Article 14 for event venue, it says this is a by right use in these districts.
Okay, so it's listed in C1 as a by right use already, is that correct or?
It's not listed anywhere as a by right use right now, which is why we're here. So by default, it's prohibited.
Yep.
And we like camping.
And we'll go back into the by right uses though, when you first look up by right uses though? Or just as definition?
It will appear only in the definition section until such time that we do an overhaul on the ordinances, and then things such as event venue, personal campground, you know, will also appear in that physical list. I'm quite sure that we can change that. It'll probably need to run through again, you know, to amend the text. It's just a simple zoning text amendment to illustrate those, and we'll look to see what others are hanging out there that we've adjusted over time that is not currently displayed. But I simply treated this the same way that we've treated others in the past.
I got to say, this looks a whole lot cleaner than what we had before.
I agree. I hope our supervisors do as well.
All right, any further question for Mr. Nichols on this? All right, if not, any public comment on this? Not online either, okay. No further discussion, do we have a motion here?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that case number 2024-0Z0A-12-18-02 be recommended to the Board of Supervisors for approval.
I'll second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so case number 2024-ZOA-12-18-02 will be recommended to the Board of Supervisors for approval. All right, I was expecting a lot more people for the adoption of the comprehensive plan. Any, I know we do have one minor thing that's changed, so Alan, would you?
If I may, yes, Mr. Chairman, there are two quick things that have changed. One thing is a very simple typo, and the other one is not complex either. The vision statement will be revised to say 2025 plan, I changed it in some areas and missed that particular one. The other small typographical change is on page 55 of the plan. Mr. Smith pointed out to me earlier that the drafts went through and Goal 3.5 was missing the word unreimbursed as we had approved the language originally, and it just had not been, I don't know what happened to it, it didn't make it into there when we published it. So this was the only other change that we found that was worthy of mention, that there will be a word added in one of the goals. So see this as clerical in nature, but wanted to bring it to your attention.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Nichols? Since he's been instrumental in getting this all put together for us? Any comments? Discussion? All right, as I understand it, if we, in order to proceed with this, we will, we'd call it a resolution, so is there a?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before moving forward, should we ask for public comments?
Ah, yes, you're right. I was wondering if we had any public comment on this. Oh, we do have one, okay, excellent. As always, if you would identify yourself and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Don McCowan with Piedmont Environmental Council. Few, few quick words. A comprehensive plan represents a community's vision for the future. In a comprehensive plan, long-range recommendations for growth and development are outlined for the next five to 20 years. After many, many public meetings and drafts going back to November 2022, we believe tonight's proposed version of the updated comp plan for Madison County gets it right. It lays out a path forward that balances the desire for economic growth with thoughtful preservation of what makes Madison special for residents and visitors alike, its rural character, scenic beauty, friendly atmosphere. For example, the plan heralds agriculture as the county's primary land use. It steers future higher-density housing development proposals to those areas of the county zone for residential and with existing services and new or expanded industries and commercial establishments to areas near principal roadways so as to minimize the impact to the rural and agricultural areas. And it promotes appropriately scaled tourism and agritourism activities as an integral part of a vibrant rural economy. Effective land use planning requires careful consideration of what areas are best suited for growth and development, and as new land use proposals come before the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors, we hope that this comprehensive plan will be the roadmap, advancing an approach to growth that complements existing services and infrastructure, protects natural resources, open space and productive farmland, and enhances economic opportunities and quality of life for residents. Thank you for the opportunity to participate in the community process that resulted in this draft. We respectfully ask that you adopt it as written, and we look forward to working with you and the residents of Madison County to bring the vision it advances to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's kind of nice to have that kind of comment. Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Yeah, I see we have Peter Work coming in, and since he had a really big hand in helping put this together. Hi, Peter, welcome. We were at that public comment on the comprehensive plan, and since you had a great deal of input on this, I thought maybe you might want to say something.
Well, it was a long effort.
Got the mic right there for you.
We produced a, just a sec, I have to sit down. I hope we produced an improved document over the last go, I think we did. So thanks to everybody that participated.
Thank you, Peter. I also want to echo that, thanks for everyone that participated, including Peter and PEC and a lot of, I was kind of surprised we don't have anybody else here tonight, because I was expecting several of my neighbors to be here. All right, any further comment, any further discussion on this, or are we ready to move for a resolution to approve this?
Mr. Chairman, it'll be a resolution to approve it with those two additions.
Mr. Chairman, it'll be a resolution to approve it with those two corrections and then to certify a copy to the board.
You ready?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution to the changes and then make a resolution to approve it and pass it on to the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
Okay, motion for the resolution has been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous approval. Thank you and thank everyone who participated in this. Okay, that finishes our cases for the public hearings. We have any other items from planning staff, commission, or the public at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I got a comment I want to make.
Good.
Before this goes too far down the road, disturbs me greatly. I've sat here for a long time, just like Clay and Cardy has. And in the time I've sat here in the 15 or 20 years, never seen this before. And I read the ordinance and I understand what it says. We're looking at making a guy get a special use permit to have a goat or some chickens or whatever behind his house. Do we know how many kids in this county have livestock behind their house? A sheep or goat or some chickens that they take out to the fire? Those kids cannot afford to go get a $500 special use permit to keep that animal on two acres. We've got to think about what we doing here. We're going to open the can of worms that we can't put a lid back on. Mr. Nichols, I understand you went by the rules. The rules clearly say that. But we've got to change this and make it a by right or something. We're going to go, if you want to see this auditorium fill up like it fills up with dogs, do this. Watch what will happen. You know, I know where there's 50 places right now in this county that's got an acre lot and they've got goats on it. They've got chickens on it. They've got a horse on it, you know? And I know this all stemmed from somebody moved somewhere and didn't like somebody. That's tough. You move from the city and you move to the country, that's the way it happens in the country. We need to take a look, a serious look at this before we push it too far. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Pete's referring, by the way, to the upcoming case SU-05-25-01. Does anyone else want to comment on that at this point?
I'll second that.
You seconded it, okay. Sounds like we may want to revisit some of the R1 uses.
I think we need to go there, Steve, though.
Yeah.
I just don't think this is a good thing.
Okay. Alan, you want to quickly swing through some of these and then we'll move on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So upcoming cases for our next workshop. We have Mr. Sidley for the River House at the Swinging Bridge. This is the gentleman in Quigglersville who we saw last time. He's got a house on the river and then a number of outbuildings that he is seeking to convert to dwellings for his short-term rental activity. We have the Madison Wood Preservers is rezoning two parcels from R2 to M2. We'll hear the second workshop on that. The Davilla and Smith Family Day Home, we're going to hear the second workshop on that one. They've been working very hard. We are going to hear Mr. Fuchs, who is the gentleman that Commissioner Elliott was speaking of with the livestock on a R1 property under two acres, and so we'll get to unpack the goats at that time. We have a zoning text amendment. Al Esch has applied for a zoning text amendment to modify the R3 district. And so he would like to see changes specifically regarding lot width and a handful of other things. So for your consideration coming up. We have Full Life Journey Farm. Mr. Lipscomb may come to the next meeting as his first workshop for a, an event venue special use permit. He is ironing out some issues with the Health Department now. And depending on the timing of those, he may or may not be here at the next workshop. And that's everything that I have coming for you at the moment.
Okay, thank you. All right, before we wrap it up, any, again, any public comment? Not much in the way of public here, okay. All right, unless we have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've got a question.
Yes.
So we've had three weeks now since our last meeting. And I was just curious if we had been able to get in touch with our secretary and see if she is going to resume her responsibilities or if we're doing something different.
The only thing I've been able to find out officially is that no.
So she, we have not been able to get in touch with or she is not going to take her responsibilities?
I think we've got a new person in the chute is going to be the answer. So Mr. Nichols is our huckleberry in the meantime. As the acting interim.
By, yeah. We have a potential candidate by the next workshop? Is that what we're looking at or is that? Is that too soon to tell?
Kick that one down the road.
Kick it down the road, okay. All right, we'll deal with it at the workshop meeting next two weeks from now, okay. Thank you, Mike. Any other comments or before we finish? Okay, if not, then I have a motion for adjournment. So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, all right, I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors portion of the meeting to order. We do have a forum. We do need to adopt an agenda. Anybody have anything we need to add to the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir.
What would you all like to do?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda in its current form as presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public comment? Any public comment? How many people are watching us? That's good, that's good. All right, we'll do public comment again at the end. Case number RZ-03-25-1, Jonathan Bond rezoning application, public hearing. Jonathan Bond has submitted an application to rezone a portion of his property from A1 agriculture to B1 business general. The applicant is seeking partial rezoning of his property so that he may operate his artificial terp in a hardscaping business out of an existing building. The property that is subject of this application is located at 3351 Oak Park Road and is further identified as Madison County Tax Map 40-40. The property contains 27 acres and is currently zoned A1. Mr. Nichols, anything to add?
Only that we like these kind of small businesses in the county. We're made up of these things. This is our economy. And while considering the conversations that we've had with Mr. Snyder's and others on alternative routes for this, I think that the rezoning gives us the greatest consistency. Because while I certainly would not like to see a bunch of little spot zones pop up out in the country, this gets our applicant operating legally in a manner that's consistent with our economy and our values. And so this is probably the most efficient and the best path to move forward by rezoning this parcel and staff recommends approval.
Questions for Mr. Nichols? I think that was very well stated. Anybody for Mr. Nichols? Mr. Bond, anything to add?
Just trying to operate my business out of our history.
Any questions for Mr. Bond? All right, to the public, to the public. All right, back to the board. What would you all like to do?
Mr. Chairman, I approve that case number RZ-03-25-1 be approved as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you. Case number 2024-ZOA-12-18-02. Adoption of personal campground definition, public hearing. The adoption of a definition for a personal campground is being proposed to allow for by right recreation on private property by regulate, by regulate the use of recreational vehicles, RVs and tents to prevent their use as permanent residents. Mr. Nichols?
Nothing else to add, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions for Mr. Nichols on this, please?
Mr. Nichols, the question I have, just for clarification, just hypothetical situation. Suppose I had an RV parked at my residence and I get in the RV and I go to campgrounds wherever. And I have a neighbor that doesn't like to see my RV sitting there. So they come to the county and contend that I am running a personal campground continuously. Who does the initial judgment and adjudication on that incident?
Somebody makes a complaint that someone is residing in an RV. I will investigate. If I can see the property from the road, it's very clear when things are garaged or even if they're open, you know, because they're not hooked up. They don't have water hoses running to them usually or electricity. And it's okay to garage your equipment. That's fine. Usually it's very evident when someone is using their RV as a residence. Quite often they've modified by adding a porch. You can see furniture that's sitting around, awnings in place. It becomes evident very quickly. So it would be the zoning department that investigates. If I cannot see from the street, I'll send a letter and have a conversation with somebody to determine. We're trying not to harass people about garaging equipment.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions for Mr. Nichols? All right, to the public, to the public. No public comment? All right, back to the board. What would you all like to do with case number 2024-0A-12-18-02?
I move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Adoption of the 2025 Comprehensive Plan, public hearing. The Madison County Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors will consider the final draft of the 2025 Comprehensive Plan for adoption. And this is with resolution 2025-8. Mr. Nichols?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman, other than that it certainly is nice to come to the conclusion of something that so many people have worked hard on to come to a good product.
Any questions for Mr. Nichols on this? All right, to the public. Any public comment? Yes, ma'am, please. We got to get a microphone to you, but yeah, stay there, stay there by all means, good gosh.
I just want to say thank you for everyone that put so much time into that comprehensive plan. I do believe that's one of the first pieces that I read all the way through and it's fabulous. It gave us a lot of insight, gave us a lot of hope and, you know, direction for our county. So I just say thank you for doing that.
In your name for the record, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Nancy Sharman.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, other public comment? All right, back to the board. We do have a recommendation for resolution 2025-8 with minor amendments to language or minor amendments to language in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve resolution 2025-8 to adopt a comprehensive plan with the minor amendments as been pointed out earlier and recommended by the Planning Commission.
I second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? I do, I think it'd be a miss. We've had so many great people working on this and it's an example of what we all should be doing for our community. Thank you, everybody that came together to do this and really put together a very good document. Other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. All right, we don't have any new business, any more information and correspondence? Take that as no. Back to public comment.
Ms. Dana Squire commented, she said congratulations to all.
Good. All right. Any other public comment? We don't have a closed session. What would you all like to do?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you all.